The green light is kind of like blink in and out. You can hear me? Okay, great. Okay, I would like to call the meeting of Committee of Claims and Penance to order on this day July 9, 2025 at 6:31 PM. Please.
Councillor Rubio, Councillor Rujio, Councillor Moreno, two in attendance.
Now, we have any public input signed up?
Not personally.
Okay, great. So, also Moreno, could you take item number two?
Yes, item number two, the first one is a. There's a four. On all the. Bakala. Junior in the. We're in. President is a. It kept up.
As the move by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we take up the claim of honor Bakala Junior for $300 for Pahco.
So.
It's absolutely.
About the so I have to see that he. Turned it in on time. And it is our. Call.
So I got a quick question for Council Milo. So it's blown tire. So obviously it's Pahco and damaged wheel, but still with the Pahco and still max out at 300, right?
That's correct.
I do see that this was something that we had Pahco on that street and it was bad show. I want to say the motion.
Portion to approve in the. Out of. About $300.
It's been moved by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we approve the claim of honor Bakala. Hope I'm not pronouncing that right. Junior, any amount of $300. Any further discussion? Well, please.
Councillor Rujio.
Yes.
Councillor Moreno.
Yes.
Two to zero.
All right. Next up is. Lorena Rivera in the amount of 524. Always and it is a.
As the move by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we take up the claim of Lorena Rivera for $524 for Pahco. And my understanding is Miss Rivera is blind. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, Mr. Rivera. Could you explain your claim a bit to us?
Was this May 19? Is that, am I looking at the stamp right? May 19, 2025?
Yeah, so it's May 19, 2025. The document they said was on the clerks of 516 and the incident was 511. So I was a little confused about that because you got an eight day period between May 11th and May 19th. However, it's certified that she had it in at 516. So to me, I, it looks like it was on time, but I could be wrong. It stamped on the 19th, which was that a Sunday, maybe? See what the dates show.
I mean, I'm sure that's the date to probably. Fill out by the.
What, the 16th?
Well, that's what it's asserted, right?
Yes. I agree.
Mrs. Rivera was stating when she filled out this. She did it on the 16th.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
We can now. Yes. How are you?
This is an email that we got in.
Yeah, 16. But that was the day she, she filled it out.
Ms. Rivera, um, we have a question for you. On your claim, what date did you fill it out? Was it the 16th or the 19th? You remember?
It's clearly emailed on the 16th. I didn't see that.
Oh, it's clear. Oh, never mind.
It's emailed. 16th is a Friday. We're probably on 19th is a Monday.
Looking for the time. It probably came in after 12:30.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Actually, no, it came in, it was emailed at 9:28, but for whatever reason, it was timestamped on the 19th. But the timestamp doesn't dictate.
The, the email is timestamped on the 16th.
Right.
Yeah, we.
Oh, yeah, it is. Well, there you go. So. So we're good.
We're good.
We're good. We're within the time frame.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rivera, I don't know if we heard you saying hi, but I haven't, haven't been able to hear you since. I don't know if you have anything to add about the claim.
She's, she's back on, on unmute. I'm trying to get her to.
I didn't realize.
Your inspection. Yeah, it's us, yeah, 300.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Rivera, please unmute.
So basically, while she's trying to unmute, there was a. Pahco there and the crew was sent out on Tuesday, 520 to fill Pahco. Separately full patch. Now, I've filled the hot patch yet, hopefully. It has or will be soon, so this doesn't happen again, but it looks like it was a city. It's culpable for this.
I agree.
Yeah, this, this is, this was part of the cobblestone road that we have there. It was utility work in the past that they haven't. We started back to the cobblestone. They'll be doing that part of the, the gas paint replacement. They're going to go over the curb as soon as at once, so. Because of the size of the hole, we put a term temporary patch and, and then when we went out with permanent hot mix, we, we, we did fill it.
Thank you.
At a later date.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Motion to approve in the. About.
It's been moved by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we approve the claim from Lorena Rivera in the amount of $300. Discussion, I would like to say something before I take a vote. Ms. Rivera, I, I know, yeah.
He's off. She's gone.
Okay, well, if she watches the video, there's a $300 max that state statute that municipalities pay for Pahco. So your 524 exceeded that, but we are going to approve up to that state max of 300.
Councillor Rujio.
Yes.
Councillor Moreno.
Yes.
Two to zero.
Okay.
All right. Next up is. Who is? Ario. It is a. Pahco claim of, of, of 300. Fifty.
It's been moved by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we take up the claim of Luis, who was Ario, in the amount of $350 for a Pahco. Again, this looks like something that this DPW went out and had to fix. They found a Pahco. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
All right, great. And that was, uh, was. Definitely reported on time. Do you have anything else, Council Moreno?
No.
Thank you.
To approve in the amount of. Of 300. Dollars.
They moved by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we approved the claim of Luis Basario in the amount of $300. Any further discussion? Please take a vote.
Chairman Rujio.
Yes.
Councillor Moreno.
Yes.
Two to zero.
All right. Next up is. Robinson. I'm saying it is a higher. Claiming amount of. 265. Always and. Who won the sense?
I've removed by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we take up the claim of Gail Robinson for the amount of $265 cents for a tire. I think so. We definitely, if we report, we can see that. Well, actually, you know, Chris, would you be able to speak to this?
Yeah, um, this one was a little. Difficult. By the time we received the field inspection claim. When we were out there, we could not find any rebar or anything in the street. However, this is part of, this section of Thai water was part of the stadium construction. So possibly it could have been something sticking out part of that construction that Dimeo was working on. So they would, they would have been responsible if there was something in the road, but we, we couldn't see anything was already. All paved in. By that time.
All right, so. I think, you know, at this point. We'll probably have to send something claiming. So Dimeo's way to see it because we don't seem to be culpable for this, correct, Council Milo?
I would agree.
Oh, 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 shit. I am. Are the. Came over. Emil.
All right, so it's been moved by Council Moreno, second by Council Rujio, that we deny and refer the claim to Dimeo Construction for the claim of Gail Robinson in the amount $265. 52 cents for a tire. Any further discussion? But please take a look.
Councillor Rujio.
Yes.
Councillor Moreno.
Yes.
Two to zero.
No further business before the claims. Second, Vela. Hi.
Good evening. Welcome to Kentucky City Council and Board of License Commissioners meetings, meetings tonight for June, uh, July 9. 2025. We have nobody signed up in person for public input, but we did receive a total of six communications. From the Friends of the Mashashik. He lives in Providence. The next two from Cameron Sagala, a resident of Pawtucket. The fourth from Adam Greenman, a resident of Pawtucket. And the fifth from Janine Silver Smith, the Executive Director of the Rowland Environmental Education Association. So they have been filed. Actually, and the sixth is from, uh, individually named Mattie, M A T T I E, Whedon regarding Harmony Dog Kennel. So with that, we will move right on to the Board of License Commissioners. Call a meeting to order the clerk of call the roll.
President Mercer.
Here.
Counselor Russo. Counselor Coder.
Here.
Counselor Gregor. Counselor Moran.
Here.
Counselor Moreno. Counselor Rubio. Counselor Scoviat. Counselor Wildan. Seven in attendance.
Mr. President, on item number one, I call for approval of the previous minutes from June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
The move by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Wildan, and that would give approval to the previous minutes from the June twenty-fifth meeting as prepared by the clerk. Are there any concerns, amendments, deletions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number two, consent agenda, and item number three, petitions for licenses. I call for approval, starting with door-to-door employee new Trinity Solar. All the way to the second page, uh, Waste Hauler New Elite Truck and Equipment LLC.
The move by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Moreno, that we give approval to dump items two and three to consent agenda and petitions for license. The petitions for license start with a door-to-door employee new for Trinity Solar. Continue down through the first third of page two with a waste hauler and new elite truck and equipment LLC. Any discussion on items two and three? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just one second, counselor. If you are here from, uh, Trinity Solar, Darlington Market, Landrum Max, Pawtucket House of Pizzas, Good Samaritans, Rhode Island, Darlington Mart. Cafe Amore and Waste Haulers Brothers Disposal Waste Management and Elite Truck and Equipment. They've all been approved. You are all set. Okay, counselor, item four.
Item four, as advertised for public hearing, Class B Victorlinu Cafe Bistro, Frank Mundo LLC, Three Exchange Street, license number LQB twenty-five dash five. My motion is to convene the public hearing.
Second.
The move by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Coder, that we convene a public hearing regarding a Class B Victorlinu request for Cafe Bistro, Frank Mundo LLC, Three Exchange Street. It would be licensed under LQB dash two-five. Dash five. I declared a public hearing open. Is the applicant from Cafe Bistro here? Sir, if you could come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, please. Home address, that is.
Sam Shore, twenty-two Montgomery Street. I have a few.
S H O R R?
S H O R R, correct. Hand out a couple things. I don't have something to bring.
Thank you. Thank you. You seen that?
Thank you.
Then these are just, just a document that show the rest started to browse through it, but I can send that and follow up as well.
Okay, um, thank you. This is an application for a Class B Victorlinu at Three Exchange Street. That happens to be, as you already know, Counselor Coder's district. So I'm going to turn this matter over to her to, uh, ask you a few questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to see you again, Mr. Shore. Um, I know that we've already, uh, met in, uh, person about the bistro and, um, uh, you already told me everything that you will be offering, but I would like you to, um, say if so, my colleagues can, um, hear you. Everything that is going to be the food, how many people, um, the bar, um, and you, you also told me that it's going to be basically like a meeting place and all that. Can you please, um, um, tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, yeah, so I live and work in downtown Pawtucket. My, uh, day job, I manufacture animation machines. We work with the schools and libraries very closely. Uh, in the Pawtucket Public Library, the Pawtucket Public Schools. So I do that during the day. I had a restaurant in Los Angeles called Maze. This was very successful, five hundred square foot restaurant, um, in, in Silver Lake area. Um, and I really wanted to, when I moved back east, I wanted to open something. Wasn't the right time. Um, until now, and this, uh, Three Exchange Street, wonderful building, old trapezoidal building, eighteen nineties. There's been a bar there for, I think, since the beginning of the, the building has always been the news cafe or some iteration. Um, and yeah, I want to do a bistro. I want to do something that's a little bit more upscale, but something that is still very accessible to the community, very understanding of the community where I am. Um, but also something that can attract other people. So the restaurants can be very simple. A lot of grilled food, grilled meat, grilled vegetables, salad. It's going to have a full bar, nine seats at the bar. About forty people can sit in the restaurant. It's only about a thousand square feet, so it's pretty small and intimate. Um, but yeah, we just want to serve up, you know, I, I don't know if you guys have been to the restaurant Al Forno in Providence, but that type of food where it's just simple and classic. You can go with your family. You could go on a date, um, and you could go sit at the bar by yourself, and I think that's, that's something we want to bring. I think Pawtucket is a wonderful place. It's served me very well, and I hope to make a place that serves it back.
Is it going to be the part of the building that was presently the news cafe or the front?
Uh, no, it's going to be next to the news and Mama Africa, so it's in between. It's actually an unoccupied space. I don't remember the last time it was occupied. It was a shoe shine.
And it's facing Summer Street, though. That part of it, the building is on Three Exchange, but it's facing Summer. Is that right?
Yes, there's actually, so there's three entrances. There's the Summer Street and Exchange Street side, uh, but we'll be using the exchange, yeah. Both of those entrances, you can see in the plan as well, though, how we're going to be using it for entering, yeah.
Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, Mr. Mundo, I just wanted to say, um, impressive.
Just paper so far, is it?
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. And I love that building, so I'm really glad to see it's being preserved and something positive is, is going to come for that.
Thank you so much.
You can take over the second floor as well.
I think they'd like me to buy the whole thing. I said, let's do one thing at a time, one thing at a time. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it is an iconic building.
Yeah, it is. Uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. So I don't know what to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hours of operation, what do you expect to be seven days a week or?
Uh, I'm working towards seven days a week, but to start, I'll be four or five days a week, five to eleven P M. Um, I want to start as a full-service restaurant to really set the tone that this is a place you come a little bit more upscale, but it's called Cafe Bistro. It will be open during the morning as well eventually. But I just want to be reasonable about how I operate in the beginning and make sure that we're full. I don't want to be open seven days and three days. I'm, I'm struggling to get our staff, so.
Yep, makes sense.
Um, I know that we talked about this, so, uh, so we are, um, just to make emphasize on it about the, if you're going to have music, how is it going to be? Um, the reason I'm asking you this is because you know that there is a, uh, well, everywhere in Pawtucket is residential.
Absolutely.
So can you, um?
Well, I'll say this, we're building a reinforced wall to actually keep the music down from the news cafe. So if anything, we're trying to make a little bit quieter space. So, uh, nothing louder than the news. We're not going to have live music. Uh, we will have probably a sound system inside, but probably playing more like jazz and things like that. I, I want to, you know, I like restaurants actually that don't have any music and you just hear the audience, but we'll probably have something. But it'll be quiet and, and yeah, certainly not, uh, nothing too loud.
Um, anybody else has?
Any other questions for the applicant?
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Shore, you can have a seat for the moment. I, we may have to call you back up. I doubt it, but.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else here? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else here to speak on this matter of this application? Anybody online, Dante?
So if anybody is waiting online to speak in this public hearing, can you please press the raise hand now button at this time? And I see no hands raised.
In that case, I will declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve Cafe Bistro. Um, request of a Class B, uh, license and at Three Exchange Street.
The move by Counselor Coder, second by both Counselor Moreno and Counselor Gregor, that approval be given to the application of Cafe Bistro Frank Mundo LLC. Three Exchange Street, license number LQB dash two-five dash five. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number five, petition for license Victorlin House First Class New Cafe Bistro Frank Mundo LLC, Three Exchange Street, license number LQB twenty-five dash five, motion to approve.
The move by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Coder, that approval be given to a petition for a class, uh, for a Victorlin House First Class New of Cafe Bistro, Frank, Frank Mundo LLC, Three Exchange Street. License number LQB dash two-five dash five. Any discussion on the motion to approve the Victorlin House? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number six, uh, the following public hearing was continued at the meeting held on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and is again taken up, Class B Victorlinu. The Amber Hookah Lounge, Amber Hookah Lounge Incorporated, five ninety Newport Avenue, license number LQB twenty-five dash four, E N T. My motion is to reconvene this public hearing.
The move by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Wildan, that we reconvene a public hearing that was continued on June twenty-fifth and again is taken up. It's a Class B Victorlinu request. The Amber Hookah Lounge, Amber Hookah Lounge, Inc., five ninety Newport Avenue, license number LQB dash two-five dash four. I will reopen the public hearing, and I know the applicant is here. Sir, if you could come forward. Dante, before we get started, is there anybody online for this?
People there, I might.
Okay, so, um, first, could you please just give your name again, uh, first and last name and address, please?
Ferris Topshi, F A R E S D A B C H I. Thirty-one Ledgewood Road, Framingham, Mass.
Ferris Topshi, thirty-one.
Ledgewood.
Ledgewood. Ledgewood Road, Framingham, Massachusetts.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, as you know, this is my district, and we, we've spoken a couple of different times now. Um, I apologize, we had to have you back, but we just had to, you know, kind of make sure we had, uh, all of our ducks, ducks in a row. So.
Absolutely.
Um, just to let my colleagues know that, um, I did speak with the owner of the hairstylist, the hair salon next door, which is the same building, but it actually a different piece of property. Um, she may or may not be on. We'll, we'll talk with her again. Now, I understand what her concerns are, and I explained to the, to the applicant, their concerns mostly involve, revolve around parking. This, this parcel has always been a convenience store or a pizza place where somebody was coming in and out, and there was not too much need for parking for that establishment. This is going to be a entirely different, uh, ballgame that their concern is that there may be parking for their patrons taken up and quite frankly, vice versa. So, um, I met with the applicant and we looked over the, the area of the parking lot that belongs to his parcel of the property. And it appears to be big enough to hold six, if not eight or nine parking spaces. Uh, the square footage requires him to have at least six. That should not be a problem. We discussed him, uh, painting, uh, the, the lines a little bit different to distinguish. Um, we kind of settled on yellow, but I, you know, as long as you can distinguish.
Yeah.
And, and their customers can distinguish. Um, we also talked about, uh, you know, I explained that we've, we all collectively have PTSD from some of the, some of the, uh, applicants over the last handful of years, and his intent is to run a, a, a cultural hookah bar, uh, primarily coffees, good coffees, but also.
Absolutely.
With this liquor license, primarily beer and wine, and perhaps something else in the, in the coffee, right?
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, we discussed hours, hours of operation as well. He's perfectly fine with, uh, weekdays closing at ten o'clock, weekends at eleven o'clock. And, um, I gave my commitment that if everything goes well and he thinks he'd like to stay open later, we can certainly discuss that, discuss that down the road. And then the only other thing was, um, entertainment. You don't intend to have amplified music.
No, 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 no.
Other than ambient stereo music, right?
Exactly.
And perhaps a, an acoustic.
Probably.
Okay, so no need to limit you to, to, to no live entertainment. If it's acoustic, I don't think the neighbors will have a problem. Um, and if they don't have a problem, I won't have a problem. So, um, did I pretty much accurately explain?
Perfect.
What we?
Yes, sir.
What we were pretty much.
Everything. Yep.
Okay, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, no. Um, I just want to make a nice place for Pawtucket, and, uh, you know, I promise it's going to be a nice spot.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, sir. Have a seat, just in case we have to pull you, call you back up. Is there anybody online who is here for that reason?
Um, if you can, um, press the raise hand button at this time, if you're here to speak on this public hearing, if you're watching via Zoom. To which I see no hands this time.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed now, and I will entertain a motion to approve with the following stipulations. That the closing hours, uh, be ten P M. Sunday through Thursday and eleven P M. Friday and Saturday. That there be no amplified music other than ambient music or amplified, amplified sound other than ambient music. Um, acoustic only live entertainment and the parking spots. After consultation with planning, the parking spots, um, will be painted a colors sufficient to distinguish from the parking spots for the other establishments in that plaza. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Moran, that the, that approval be given to the application for the Amber Hookah Lounge, Amber Hookah Lounge, Inc., five ninety Newport Avenue, license number LQB dash two-five dash four, with the stipulations as articulated. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I didn't.
One more thing for you, sir.
Item number five, petition for license Victorlin House First Class New Cafe Bistro Frank Mundo LLC, Three Exchange Street. Uh, license number LQB dash, uh, twenty-five dash five, uh, with the same stipulations, correct?
Uh, yes.
All right, with the same, uh, stipulation, motion to approve.
Sorry.
Do you need me to read the?
Nope, and, uh, you've got that, right, Rick?
Yeah, you don't need to put the stipulation.
On the Victorlin.
Oh, you know, okay.
It's on, it's on the class, it's on the Class B.
That'll cover the whole thing.
You know what? I'm sorry. I read the wrong thing, didn't I? I did. Yeah, I did the, I did read the wrong thing. My apologies.
All right, let's, let's redo seven.
Okay, redo seven. Sorry, my apologies. I jumped.
Me too.
The, yeah, thank you. The following petition for license was postponed at the meeting and held June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and is again taken up. Victorlin House First Class New, the Amber Hookah Lounge, Amber Hookah Lounge Incorporated, five ninety Newport Avenue. License number LQB dash twenty-four dash four. Uh, motion is to approve with.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Coder and Counselor, uh, Moreno, that the following petition that was postponed to meeting held June twenty-fifth and is again taken up. It's a Victorlin House First Class New request for Amber Hookah Lounge, Amber Hookah Lounge, Inc., five ninety Newport Avenue, license number LQB dash two-five dash four. The motion is to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now you're all set, sir. Good luck.
Thank you. Right, item number eight, uh, petition for license, entertainment and expansion on premises, two-day petition of community center Grupo Amigos de Tercera, uh, for a license to have a Sawa Vicente de Palo festival. And a two-day expansion of the Class D liquor license to have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages outdoors at fifty-five Memorial Drive on Friday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from seven P M. to eleven P M. And Saturday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-five, from two P M. until eleven P M. License number E V T dash twenty-five dash forty-seven. Motion to take up.
Approve.
Approve, motion to approve.
Moved by Counselor Russo, second by Counselor Moreno, that approval be given to a petition of the community center Grupo Amigos de Tercera for a license to have a Sawa Vicente de Palo, Palo feast. And a two-day expansion of the Class D liquor license to have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages at fifty-five Memorial Drive on Friday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from seven P M. until eleven P M. And Saturday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-five, from two P M. until eleven P M. It's license number E V T dash two-five dash four-seven. The motion is to approve. Is there any discussion? I'll just say that this is in my district. Um, it's been going on for longer than I've held the seat. Um, and I have no issues with the approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion. Posed motion carries.
Item number nine petition for licenses. A entertainment and expansion of premise one day petition of Cafe Ordway Neptune Incorporated for a license to have a John Sage Band in one day expansion of their class. BV liquor license to have music, serve food and alcohol beverages outdoors at one Ordway Street on Saturday. July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from five PM until nine PM license number EBT twenty-five dash forty-nine. B entertainment and expansion of premise one day petitions of Cafe Ordway Neptune Incorporated. For a a license to have a rock and blues band and one day expansion of their class BV liquor license. To have music, serve food and alcohol beverages outdoors at one Ordway Street on Friday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. From five PM until nine PM license number EBT dash twenty-five dash fifty. And C entertainment and expansion of premise one day petition of Cafe Ordway Neptune Incorporated for a license to have. A zero-gravity duo band and one day expansion of the class BV liquor license to have music, serve food and alcohol beverages. Outdoors at one Ordway Street. On Friday, August eighth, twenty twenty-five from five PM until nine PM license number EBT dash twenty-five dash fifty-one. Motion is to take up these three licenses.
Second. Been moved and council you have no problem taking up all three at once?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Ruzza second by Council Moreno that we take up. Uh three petitions for license from the petition from Cafe Ordway Neptune Inc. First is for a license have a John Sage Band and a one-day expansion of their class BV liquor license to have music, serve food. And alcoholic beverages outdoors at one Ordway Street on Saturday, July nineteenth from five to PM until nine PM. That would be license number EBT dash twenty-five dash forty-nine. The second petition of Cafe Ordway is a license to have a rock a blues band and a one-day expansion of a class BV. Liquor license have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages that outdoors at one Ordway. Street on Friday, July twenty-fifth from five PM until nine PM, that's license number twenty-five uh EBT dash twenty-five dash five zero. And again, a petition of Cafe Ordway Neptune Inc. For a license to have a zero-gravity duo band. And a one-day expansion of their class BV liquor license to have music, serve food and alcoholic beverages outdoors at one Ordway. Street on Friday, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-five from five PM until nine PM, that would be license number EBT dash twenty-five dash fifty-one. The motion is to take up all three petitions at once, these are in Council Moran's District Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President, um Tom, I think you're here, right?
Yes.
If you just want to come up to the podium, just ask a couple of questions, that's all.
Sir, if you could just give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Yes, sir, so my name is Thomas Riley, R I L E Y. Address is forty-nine Marlane Drive, M A R L A I N E. Marlane Drive in Secoc. O two seven seven one, my wife and I own. Are the the sole members of Neptune LLC and we owned Cafe Ordway.
Tom, you already did this, right? I think in 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 May, right? You had something similar?
Yes, sir, we had we had just one event.
Okay, and what time was that again for that? I'm trying to remember back then.
Um, I think that was.
Five thirty, didn't I?
That was five thirty-nine.
Yeah, and I didn't have any issues, there were no complaints at that point in time for that particular um event. And I know we spoke the other day on this, Tom, you had mentioned that certainly there'd be no any alcohol certainly served outside. Uh would be in plastic cups, correct?
Well, any what we had in the event in May, we were actually had a cash register outside.
Okay.
And so people could buy. Alcohol outside. But we. And that's that's not the norm. So that was a much larger event.
Okay.
This is is really so we have the option of having the band outside. Whether permitting. So it's um any alcohol would be purchased inside. And if they brought it outside would be of course, plastic cups.
Okay, and then we talked about you'd have everything cleaned up for the next day, but I from what you told me, you're not expecting a huge type of crowd for these things, right?
No, you know, we've owned this place for seven years and we're still trying to get a big crowd. Um. I I don't expect much of a crowd.
And the only issue, and again, it's not even an issue, just a discussion would be. It's live music, five to nine, I have no problem with the hours.
Yes.
It's only getting darker around that time or just before that time, so. You know, just want to make sure that whatever sound system is out there, I mean. You're gonna hear the music, just again, there are residential uh certainly houses around that area and tenements, so you just want to make sure that the noise isn't too loud and. As you said, it's gonna end at nine o'clock anyway, correct?
Yeah, and in uh. The bands we have had outside, they have asked us. Is this too loud and and um? So they are aware that that they need to be respectful of of their neighbors.
Okay, and you'll be present or some who will be present there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um I don't have any other questions, I hope anybody else.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant? Uh in that case, is there anybody else? Uh this is not a public hearing, so nobody else for the applicant? Okay, you can have a seat, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll stand a motion. Up, Councilor.
They are allowed to cook outside and serve food with this license, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they're they're allowed to serve outside and.
So but they're they're allowed, it says here to serve food. And alcohol beverages outdoors. So if they have a grill outside, they're. They're eligible to cook on a grill outside hamburgers and hot dogs.
Sure, that is correct, yeah, yeah.
And is that the plan, Mr. Riley, to grill or?
It is now.
It is now.
Well, it's an option.
Yes.
Wanted to, I know you swinging by, you certainly have the option, right?
Yeah, we we like to have the options. Like this is an option if we if it's raining outside, then we're gonna have the bands indoors. But if it's nice out, we'd like to be able to have them outdoors. We have uh an extensive patio that we um spent a lot of money on last year. And for the express purpose of of doing things outside. So it's and now I know that the steps I have to take to make. To to make that legal to do, well. You know, I'm. I think I may not have understood all the ramifications in the past, so now we're trying to do this the right way.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? In that case, Council Moran?
I make a motion to approve.
All three.
All three.
The move by Councilor Ruzza second uh Councilor Moran second by Councilor Ruzza and Councilor Kodea that approval be given to both A, B, and C. The three petitions of Neptune Inc. For one-day expansion of premise. To serve have music, serve alcohol, food and alcoholic beverages at one Ordway Street on Saturday, July nineteenth from five PM till nine PM. Friday, July twenty-fifth from five PM to nine PM. And Friday, August eighth from five PM until nine PM, any discussion on the motion to approve all three? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed motion carries, you're all set, sir?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number ten, a petition for license entertainment class and class F one full privilege petition of Aloha Restaurant Lounge for license to have a. Cop Cabaret Festival outdoors. And to sell food and alcoholic beverages at three fifty-four Pine Street. On Saturday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five from three PM until eight thirty-three uh eight thirty PM. License number EBT dash twenty-five dash fifty-two, motion to take this license up.
The move by Councilor Ruzza second by Council Moran that we take up a petition of Aloha Restaurant Lounge for a license of a Cabo Verde. Festival outdoors and to sell food and alcoholic beverages at three fifty-four Pine Street on Saturday, July twenty-sixth. From three PM until eight thirty PM, it would be license number EBT dash twenty-five dash fifty-two. Um Aloha Restaurant, I noticed that's you, Mr. Lopez, right? Could you please come forward? No, it's not. Um.
Good night.
Could you, I? We know who you are, but can you just just for the record, give him your name and address?
Yes, good, good. Adelino Lopez, twenty-seven Whitman Street in Pawtucket, Orlando.
Mr. Lopez, this is um in Councilor Stokoviac's district and she's not feeling well tonight, she didn't mention anything to me about this. Um I know three fifty-four Pine Street has had other outdoor events like this before, is that that's correct, right, Rick?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, um. You know what our concern always is, right? Not loud music and intrusion on a neighborhood and all the rest, this is a slightly different area, there's less residential. Uh concerns, so. Given that Councilor Stokoviac didn't express any concerns, I think. You know, I myself am okay with this, um but does anybody else? Have a any questions for Mr. Lopez on this particular petition? Counselor?
So uh, Ms. Lopez, you're expecting five hundred uh people roughly for this event?
Yes.
And do you think that'll be all the same time? Do you think there'll be, you know, people coming in and coming out?
No, people come in at different times. They come in at different times.
So not five hundred at one particular time?
No, 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 people's coming.
And the petition is to is to end at eight thirty PM, right?
It's early.
And that's a hard stop, you know that, right?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay.
Counselor?
Uh, Mr. Loops, um I'm glad to see you. And the proper, thank you, so thank you. Yes, um and the only thing, you know, the concerns, uh like uh the president said enough stated to you before, it's just, you know, you just keep in mind. To keep the peace, I mean, the peace in the neighborhood, you know, uh obviously you gotta play music and and all of that, but. So that you can come back in the future and make these applications again, okay, so.
Yeah, sure.
So I hope everything goes well with uh.
Okay.
The uh. Event.
Okay.
Alright.
In that case, would you make a motion to approve?
I'll I'll. Well, something.
I'll make the motion of proof.
Alright, I'll second it. There you go. The move by the move by Council Council Wildenhain second by Councilor Gregor. That approval be given to a petition of Aloha Restaurant for a license of a Cabo Verde Festival outdoors. And to sell food and alcoholic beverages at three fifty-four Pine Street on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, three PM until eight thirty PM, it'd be license number EBT dash two-five dash five two. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, you're all set.
Before I take item number eleven, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to introduce a communication from um. Uh from uh Captain D uh Giorgio.
Remove uh you'd like to amend the agenda, is that what you said?
Yeah, I want to amend the agenda to introduce a communication from Captain.
That's not item eleven though, right? Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Ruzza that we uh.
Amend these.
Second second and by Councilor Kodea that we amend the agenda for the purpose of introducing a letter. Any discussion on amending the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I would like to make a motion to introduce file uh and file a communication from Captain Dino Giorgio. Uh regarding um conducted checks at Aloha Restaurant on nine oh four Main Street.
The move by Council Ruzza second by Council Moreno that we uh. Introduce and file a communication from Captain Giorgio of the Pawtucket Police Department regarding. Aloha Restaurant, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Um all all in favor of filing communication?
Aye.
Posed motion carries, okay.
Alright, item number ten is a petition um.
Eleven.
Eleven, sorry, item number eleven is. Uh communication from uh Dean Dino Giorgio Pawtucket Police Department to Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners response updating. Update regarding event at Aloha Restaurant on July fifth. Motion is to uh file and.
File a communication, communication take up? Okay, that works, yes. Motion from by Councilor Ruzza second by Councilor Gregor that we file a communication. Uh from Captain George Giorgio Pawtucket Police Department to Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners regarding a response. An update regarding an event at Aloha's Restaurant on July fifth, again, the motion is to uh. File and take up the communication, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, Councilor Gregor, do you wanna weigh in on this or is filing it enough?
I just want to say uh thank you to Captain Giorgio for uh. Doing the patrol, appreciate it, especially on July uh fifth and. Fourth, and I know there's a lot of things going on in the city at that time, so that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um. Item number twelve and thirteen.
I'm sorry, did we approve the all in favor of filing the communication?
Aye.
Posed motion carries.
Uh item twelve and thirteen are kinda dealing with the same thing, should I take those at the same time?
Sure.
Okay, alright, if that's okay with the committee uh council, alright, um item twelve, communication from Kira Witzney Witzney. Uh to Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners, concern inquiry about the status of kennel at sixty-five Patterson Avenue. I'd like to um make a motion to uh file and take that up, also at the same time, item number thirteen, communication from Lieutenant Joseph Schahan. Pawtucket Police Department Animal Shelter Liaison and Catherine Munslow. Animal Control Officer to the Honorable Members of the Pawtucket City Council Response Report on Harmony Kennel sixty-five Patterson Avenue. Also would like to make a motion to file and to take that up.
It's been moved by Councilor Ruzza second by Councilor uh Gregor that we take up two, we file two communications, the first from Kira Witzy. To Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners regarding her concerns and inquiry about the status of the kennel at sixty-five Patterson Avenue. As well as a communication from Lieutenant Schahan Pawtucket Police Department, the Animal Shelter Liaison and Catherine Mul- Munslow. Animal Control Office to the Honorable Members of Pawtucket City Council again regarding a report on Har- Harmony Ca- Harmony. Kennel, I'm sorry, at sixty-five Patterson Avenue. Uh the motion is to file the communications, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No, do you want to talk?
We'll we'll take it all, but.
Okay, item number fourteen, the following petition for renewal was postponed at the meeting held March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and is again taken up. Kennel Renewal Harmony Harmony Dog Training LLC sixty-five Patterson Avenue. License number KNL twenty-five dash two, motion is to take it up.
It's been moved by Council Ruzza second by Council uh Gregor that we the following petition for a renewal was postponed at the meeting held March nineteenth. Is again taking up, it's a kennel renewal Harmony. Harmony Dog Training LLC sixty-five Patterson Avenue license number KNL dash two-five dash two. The motion is to take up the matter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, uh Council Gregor with your indulgence, uh Ms. Witzy is here, she had signed up for public input. But uh considering her input really had to do with this one particular renewal, I. Told her she could come up at this time, do you do you mind handling it that way? Ms. Witzy, if you'd like to come forward, please? And we have your communication and your address, so um. Please tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Um I just had some concerns because I was um recently made aware that there was, it's on the table for expansion. I've spent the last year voicing my concerns about what's going on, I don't know if you realize just how close my home is to the kennel. I didn't get a chance to print out pictures, but I I'd have them on my phone. It's literally not even a foot. Outside of my residence where the dogs are toileted. I spoke at the hearing in September, I was hoping maybe zoning would come back out, you know, and assess this. I just don't understand why this business offering these services is outside someone's home. You know, the noise has calmed down since last year, the smell has not. Then the recent heatwave, it was unbearable. Unbearable. I complained for the last year, I can't open my basement windows, my kitchen window, I had to close my second floor windows. You know, I should not have to live like this. I have mentioned this to Animal Control, they've been assessing the situation periodically, they come out, you know, take a report, I've mentioned this for a year. You know, and I just. I don't think this is fair that I have to live like this. I've been there, you know, I'm relatively new to the area, I certainly wouldn't have bought a home. Next door to a dog kennel. You know, and I just don't understand how this was approved. And I'm really concerned that expansion is on the table, if it's. This kind of smell now, what's it gonna be when there's more dogs?
This is a renewal, is is there an expansion proposed?
My understanding is uh the applicant was looking to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to see about increasing. Uh but he I believe he's here so he could speak on that, increasing the amount of dogs in the kennel.
But that's not up now, right?
No.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So this is really about a renewal, we took it off the mass renewals and scheduled it a couple. A number of meetings out so we could be here tonight, right, so um. That's not before us, as far as I understand, there's.
Yeah, if I could just, so my understanding is the. Uh the number of animals that can be held over there according to the city ordinance. Uh with the kennels i- is left up to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, so uh so in a way, she's correct that. You know, approving this would allow the R I D E M to approve the license and. If he's asking for more dogs, I guess they would have to uh. Approve that it is, so it is outside a privy, but. That's just the way the uh. The ordinance is, yeah.
Okay.
It's for clarification.
Okay, so we are entertaining whether or not to renew this kennel license as is at the moment, is that correct, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, um. I know you had some some concerns, your constituents had some concerns, so. Ms. Witzy, have you told us everything you you came here to tell us?
Yeah, that's about it, I haven't heard any updates, I know there was a, I thought the meeting was in June, but then I didn't hear anything, so that's. You know, was my concerns, I had written another letter in June seventeenth that hopefully you received about, you know, the smell.
We did.
And, you know. I just. It's.
We do understand, we do understand your your frustrations.
Very frustrating because it's been a year. It's been a year of this. You know, and I think it just hasn't been fair to resident, you know, the residents. I think there was no consideration given to us when this was approved, I don't understand how anyone can come and look at the site. See that it's surrounded by residential homes and think that this is okay. They wouldn't want to live like this. They wouldn't wanna live like this, they wouldn't wanna not be able to open windows, I mean, it stinks to high heaven, it's, it's crazy. So, thank you.
We do understand and empathize, I, counselor, did you say the, the applicant or the license holder is here, did you say?
He is, yes.
Okay, um, would you like him to come up, or?
Well, yeah, he's free to come up and-
Thank you, Ms. Witzy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's his name? Is he here?
Louis Rosado.
Mister Rosado, are you here?
I-
Could you come forward, please? It's Louis, correct?
Louis.
Louis Rosado, you just give the clerk your, your home address, please?
It is two seventy-five, uh, Geno Street in Providence, Rhode Island.
Okay, counselor Gregor?
Uh, Mister Rosado, thanks for coming down, is there anything that you wanted to say regarding this?
At the moment, no.
So, my concern here is I'm not sure what happened regarding the, uh, the zoning approving, uh, by the zoning department approving the, um, the use for the kennel. Your, your, uh, business is, I guess from what I understand, from the, uh, certificate of zoning compliance here is industrial open, and that's what I'm being told here, and kennels are not allowed in any other zone but industrial open, and there's, I mean, there's reasons why that is the case, which I'm sure you can appreciate from the complaints of the residents. Uh, your business board is Mrs. Whitley's property, as well as a couple of others in the back, and as you know, there's been numerous complaints, and I mean, I'm reviewing this stuff here, so, the whole point of having kennels in a, um, industrial open zone, always to mitigate the, the effects of just the sort of complaints that you've been hearing from your neighbors, which is noise, uh, the pollution and everything else. And these, um, zonings, very, uh, are not supposed to be arbitrarily done, so that's my understanding, it's supposed to be, they're supposed to make sure that they separate, um, you know, heavily and potentially disruptive activities from residential neighborhood, which, uh, your kennel, or kennels as a general practice, I mean, you can't, that's what dogs do, they, they, you know, they're gonna bark, they're gonna make noise, and which is why kennels are supposed to be in an, um, industrial open zone only, so I, so I'm looking at, and my understanding is, uh, that you, you never apply for some sort of permissible use of, uh, variants of any kind, um, so, so, um, so what I'm gonna propose is, I have questions, uh, for the, uh, zoning director, so they can kinda come here, um, and explain to us how this was approved, uh, how that went about, because it's like Ms. Witney and all the other neighbors that board, uh, your kennel, I wouldn't wanna live next to a kennel with all that noise and the smell and everything else, I don't blame them, that's not what they signed up for, so the issue here is, is not with the, uh, the board of, uh, licensing, it's the zoning department, so when you apply for a license, we don't consider it unless we receive a certificate of zoning compliance, so you will approve, so whatever reason why you approved is problematic, because it's not clear to us, but for the very reasons that are just outlined, because there's no way, does it, it doesn't matter because you're running, it doesn't, if I ran at the dog kennel, I would have the same problems, that's what dogs do, that's what a kennel does. So why it was approved i- is an issue, and they didn't even seem to require you to have any sort of variance, so apply for any special permit, do additional scrutiny, uh, before you will approve, so, um, I'm gonna, so my motion is gonna be to continue this, to give, uh, the zoning director a chance to come down at the next meeting, and of, and of course, you know, you'll be noticed, so they can explain to how this happened and what can be done about this, because it's not gonna change, especially if, my understanding is you're looking to increase the number of dogs, it's just gonna get worse, so you're gonna be plagued forever with the same complaints and ongoing from your neighbors, rightfully so, and uh, and I'm not sure what can be done here.
Well, on my B F, I can, um, I've offered solutions, I've done as much as I can to adjust the facility and spend money to accommodate the sounds. I've had animal control officers from other towns and other state utilize and come down and work with me, and honestly have told me how wonderful my place is. I had you recently over and offered you to walk out to my play area and give a smell test, I welcome anybody on the panel to stop in, don't call me. Don't call me, stop in, give it a good sniff, because I've had professionals from all over the state come to my facility to train with me, I've held workshops with other dog trainers, again, internationally known, and if you need referrals from them, they're welcome to write those, they haven't smelt anything. I apologize on occasion, you might get a little with the urine when a dog just finished urinating on a warm evening, I apologize. It is an industrial area, I did my research before I applied there, the clerk knew me, because I've kept coming in with research and kept looking at locations, and the zoning does match exactly what I need, and approves me, allows me to do it. So I do believe and understand everybody's concerns. But I work and stay very closely within the guidelines that I am required, whether it's the Rhode Island Department of Environmental, whether it's the state of Pawtucket, or the city of Pawtucket, everything I'm done and continue to do is to help, but I get no solution or any kind of feedback back other than just complaints. None of the cli- neighbors have come by and tried to bridge a gap, let's be friendly, let's be kind, how can I help you? I'm not going anywhere, I have a lot of money invested in it, I'm a friendly guy, just, let's come have a conversation. I spray that thing down daily now, I add a turf sand that costs a hundred dollars, I spray that down, I spray it so that it traps the dog's urine. I go above and beyond to try to accommodate, that's pretty much all I have in my own control. Other than that, I can't offer anything else, other than continue to come and try to help, in whatever way I can.
Thank you, counselor, uh, Wildon Hayne. How, how many years have you run this establishment here?
This establishment's been running since two thousand nineteen, and prior to this location, I worked out of the Rhode Island Animal Medical Center, which was established, they've been doing it for about veterinary medicine for over twenty years, the gentleman's father did it.
Is there, is there a way in your area, turn around and to bring certain aspects of your, your play area, to move it back farther from the residential area? If you're saying it's mo- industrial, is there a way for that to happen?
Other than costing tens and thousands of dollars, I don't see it, because that's the only location that is not only sanded, but also stoned to filter the urine, which is again, within the research of what I've done, and the research of talking to other people that I know that run facilities, that was the best way to do it under a turf, is it's go sand, cobblestone or a specific stone, and then it's flattened out, and then the asphalt turf goes on top of it. And then you, you have a sand that you can apply, which is like a cat litter for the actual asphalt turf, and not only helps calm or trap the urine smell, but it also helps because of the other downside of having asphalt turf is it can affect the dog's paws. And so we have to make sure that we don't burn any dog's paws, and so that element also helps keeps that from getting too hot.
I don't know your building, so I'm just curious whether or not-
I welcome you to come look, take a look.
No, I, I appreciate that, but I'm just curious, sitting here thinking of it, and somebody says that it's right on top of my house, whether or not you're built, if your building's just on top of her house, and you don't have an extended area out where you might be able to accommodate.
Yeah, uh, I, again, I welcome anybody, and I won't discredit her feelings, I get it, I understand, I would be angry too. Her house is literally right on the actual fence. When Mister Reggager came by, I walked over, I, again, let him know, I understand her complaints. Yeah, I get it, on a nice wind gust, you're gonna probably smell it, but it's just one house that's there. And I do the best I can to accommodate it, and it's not, in my opinion, it's not as consistent as it's being established it is, in my opinion. I think that's subjective to who-
That one house was on Geno Street next to someplace, you would feel a little bit differently, you might feel a little bit more like Ms. Witzy does. You know, to, to say it's that one house, to her, that's her house.
Absolutely.
Counselor, I know you wanted to continue, um, I just had a, a quick question, I know we continued it from a couple of months ago to tonight, because the D E M, the state license, was valid through about now, is that, is, is that my, is my recollection correct?
They just recently approved it, and I already submitted that as well, I pass all their state, state requirements.
So postponing as the, the counselor intends to motion doesn't really change anything one way or the other until we reconvene. Right, he, he would still operate because he has a state license. Um, we would just be postponing or continuing a decision on the municipal license. Is that correct, clerk?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I ju- I just wanna make sure we were on solid footing. So i- is that your motion, counselor, to continue this, and is there a request with that motion?
Well, well, yeah, the request is for, um, Mister Johnson to, uh, come to the next meeting a- and give the council, um, a full understanding how this zoning, uh, for the kennel was approved, uh, when it borders literally residential on the entire side, so it's not just Ms. Whitley, is Seamus, I forget his name, it was submitted, him and his wife had a baby, and submitted several complaints in the past, uh, within the one year that, uh, the site's been open. I mean-
Could I, could I suggest this?
Yep.
Uh, our next meeting is a noon time meeting, that's not much transact- transaction, not many transactions are done. If we made it, if we continued it to the first meeting of August, and asked zoning to also weigh, I, 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 I get the sense that there's a clear line that here over is industrial open, and here over is residential, and that the line is the line. And maybe there should be some consideration about a buffer between residential and manufacturing, or residential and, uh, maybe we could ask him that question too, is it, is it literally just a distinct line in the sand, so to speak, that this is residential, this is industrial open, and it's allowed, I mean, it, it could be as straightforward in black and white as that.
Yeah.
But I think if we asked him to look into it from that perspective, I, I don't know that he is going to be able to tell us what transpired in two thousand nineteen when that-
No, it tells, this was last year, this, he's only been operating for a year.
I thought you said nineteen, two thousand-
My business been in operations since two thousand-
This site-
This, this is my second, this is, yeah, I'm working on my annual approval.
I, I do recall you coming before us, and, you know, there were, there were concerns all along, so, um, motion to continue till the first meeting of August?
Which would be at noon or regular?
No, regularly, that's why I'm, that's why, the, the second meeting of July is a noon time meeting, the second meeting of August is a noon time meeting. I mean, we can do it at noon time if, if you'd like to, but I-
I, I don't think that would be- I mean, I, I don't think the neighbors, I, I mean, the heat we've been having, if that continues, Ms. Whitley, for instance, is gonna be severely prejudiced.
Sure, I, I'll do what you'd like, I, I know you're trying to do the best you can for your constituents, I, I'm just trying to move things along, but that, that's fine with me, if, if you'd like to do it then, and-
Yeah.
See if we can get-
I'm not sure how we proceed with this, because, I mean, I don't necessarily blame Mister Rosado, he applied for a permit, it was approved. The fact that it was approved is concerning to me, in light of what's going on here, and the fact that a kennel is only allowed in an industrial open, why they would allow it to be open right on a residential area as well, with several homes around, I, I just don't get that, without any sort of scrutiny? Because I mean, I'm looking at the basic laws here, I mean, there was no various supply for, no special per- permit, there were no modification to the zoning requirement, uh, no stringent scrutiny from the zoning board, and I'm just trying to figure out, how do you protect the neighborhood? So whenever, uh, his situation here would be considered a non-typical use, in light of the fact that he borders this neighborhood.
Okay, ma- ma- makes sense, and I, I actually, you know, the zoning director would be on duty on, on that day to be able to attend a, a noon time meeting anyway, so, uh, your preference is to continue this matter until the next meeting, July twenty-third, July twenty-third at noon time, and in the meantime, ask the, the-
I have, um, I won't be in town, I'll, I'll be at a conference, our annual conference, so, uh, unfortunately, if, if you'd like me to be here, which I would love to be here, so, I'm not available.
Again, my, my feeling is that the council will get some of the answers at that noon time meeting, and then he would likely do one of a couple of things, either motion to approve, motion to deny, or a motion to continue again, so you'd be able to come back in, right? Does that sound about?
To, yes, understand correctly, we're willing to work at their time, but I would love to still also be here as well, so I can also potentially ask questions, since I've been here at every meeting, and to try to be here, I think it's only fair.
So you get, you're free to talk-
I'm free before then, or?
Yeah, so if, if you want to go down and talk to zoning about this particular issue too, you know, you kinda know what the the parameters are, what the concerns are, um, and you could speak to him then, even at the next meeting, if you were here, you would not necessarily be asking questions of him, you know?
Correct, but I could have a conversation like after-
You could have, you're free to have a conversation with him anytime between now and then, and, and if it's continued in, you know, to the, to the next meeting in, in, in August, but-
Uh, one other question I want to ask is, um, I know animal control has come by, I know people have come by to check the facility and do inspections, um, what are some of the results of those? Of, you know, even animal control, are they saying they're, they're getting absolutely horrible odor every time they've come to the facility? What are some of the feedback that you've guys have gotten from those inspections, because they do come very frequently?
I don't have, I haven't seen those-
Would be something from Mr. Reggager?
They, they were provided, it's on the, it's on the website.
No, for this meeting?
Yeah.
No, I, I put ongoing is what he's saying.
Do you know what it says?
Yeah, the c- communication from Lieutenant Joseph, uh, Schahan.
Those, those are on the clerk based website, on, on tonight's agenda, there'll be a link to that, so when it says communication,
Okay.
Um, number eleven, I think it was.
Thirteen.
I didn't get any paper, nothing was mailed to me.
So if, if, if you go onto the website and go to the city council?
Yep.
If, if he wants to call tomorrow, talk to Michelle, we can-
Okay.
We can look up and, and get what, you know, the communications from, from, uh-
Animal Control.
Yeah, if you could provide him, if, if you're able to call tomorrow, if you could provide him with all the communications that have gone on during the course of, the course of this-
Yeah, Michelle's, Michelle's helpful, so I-
In the meantime, in the meantime, we, we have a motion to continue to, uh, the renewal application until the next meeting on July twenty-third at noon time, and a request for, uh, the zoning director to look into the propriety of that certificate of zoning compliance, um, relative to-
The zoning certificate.
Licensing.
Certificate of zoning.
Certificate of zoning compliance, and if he would please attend, if he's able to answer the counselor's questions. But at least that will give him a heads up on, on what-
Will I be getting approved on that, on that meeting, or what, what, would, how, what?
Perhaps, but like I said, one of three things could happen.
Okay.
Uh, it should be on Zoom, right?
Yes.
He could participate.
Was that what he's asking? No, he can't.
If he's away, you want-
No, I'm away, but I was wondering if at that meeting, would we be hearing whether I'm gonna be approved or not?
Right, so that's, as I said, that, you know, there's like three options.
Okay.
Um, you know, it, it's, it's kind of up to the counselor of the district, he would make a motion to approve-
Okay.
Deny or continue.
Okay.
My gut feeling is we probably would continue it one more time to-
Because I would like you to be present, whatever happens, you have a right to be here.
So it'd be unlikely, but I would also suggest that I don't believe you would make a motion to deny outright without him being here, yes?
I, I would not, no.
Okay, so you can at least- Okay, so you can at least feel.
Thank you.
A certain level of comfort on that. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. So that's, do you, Rick, do you have the motion? And it was seconded by Council Wildenham? Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, no further business coming before the Board of License Commissioners. I make a motion that we adjourn and reconvene as a Pawtucket City Council.
Move by Council Rouge, second by Council City, that we uh, adjourn as Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners and convene as Pawtucket City Council. Before we do. I ask everybody stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance started by Council Greger.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
Pawtucket City Council, come to order. Clerk who called a roll?
President Mercer.
Here.
Counselor Rouge.
Here.
Counselor Codier.
Here.
Counselor Greger.
Here.
Counselor Moran.
Here.
Counselor Moreno. Counselor Rubio. Counsel Koveat, Counsel Wildenham.
Here.
Seven in attendance.
Mr. President, I call for approval of the previous minutes from June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five at the Finance Committee and the City Council.
Second.
The move by Council Rouge, second by Council Wildenham, approval be given to the minutes of the June twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five meetings of the. Finance Committee and the City Council as prepared by the clerk. Are there any concerns, amendments, deletions, adjustments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I call for approval of item number two, the consent agenda and correspondence.
The move by Council Rouge, second by Council Moreno, that approval be given to item two, the consent agenda and correspondence. Are there any items? The members would like to discuss in item two, and I'm gonna look to my right for a change. Anybody on the right? Of course. Anyone on the left? Counselor Wildenham.
D.
D?
D is indeed, yes.
Counsel Gregor, did you raise your hand?
Uh, yes. The B, it looks like they're all together. Uh, B, C, and D. And E, I guess. I mean, they're all, just take them up together, I suppose.
That okay with you, Counsel Wildenham? Can we take all three together?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, in that case, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's take B, C, D, and E together. And since you've got all four of those, Counsel Gregor, why don't you go first?
Um, so I wanted to um, so. They're all related to uh, John Colicke, uh, Blackstone Distribution LLC. One Mashasik Street quarter, second, twenty twenty five construction update. Uh, C is a communication from Carl Johnson, Director of Zoning Code Enforcement, to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council, response building permit status responding regarding one Mashasik Street. Uh, D is a communication from Frank Malos, City Solicitor, to the honorable members of the City Council. Response tax stabilization regarding one Mashasik Street and. The E again is from Blackstone Distribution. General Members of Pawtucket City Council, response regarding the August sixth request to attend the uh, pre-council meeting. So uh, I also thank you to uh, Solicitor Malos for providing us some advice regarding. Because I had proposed a resolution to uh, rescind the twenty year tax stabilization that's uh. Was extended to Blackstone Distribution. Um, I'm not sure where that stands, uh, if it's been executed or not and and. In large part, that was because of the two years plus um, where. This organization has completely. Uh, I feel insulted our communities. Um, the Woodlawn community, people most affected. Two and a half years, uh, have expressed the way I feel about it and we've received zero from them. We had to repeatedly ask them to do anything despite what they say that they've been on top and communicate, uh, communicating with the planning department on a constant basis. Uh, the fact that the fence. On Mashasik Street over half, going down almost halfway towards Mashasik was down for over a week, including Christmas vacation. Exposing our community to the extremely hazardous place that represents one Mashasik Street. It wasn't done until after Christmas and from the onset of two thousand, when they purchased the property. When they demolished, when they started the demolition. Two thousand twenty one, they exposed almost an entire city block. With uh, uncovered spaces with for uh, again exposing the community, children, people from. Health and safety throughout the time. It is numerous uh, instances of these sort of things happening. And my position's been uh, uh, and according to. The solicitor, we can't rescind. We can't do a resolution to rescind it, but we can do a resolution to recommend uh, for the mayor to rescind it. So, but that's something we were gonna take a look at at the next meeting on August eighth. But I just wanted to, in the interim, just say thank you. Uh, I mean, I'm glad that they finally got the financing, according to the letter, to initiate um. Activities over there, but they've initiated it um, for about a week now and. Notwithstanding our own zoning. And the states regarding remediation and protecting the public, they initiated activities over there of a excessively hazardous place. Without any remediation measures in place. There were no perimeter silk stocking around it. The ones that were there was completely deteriorated. No water can is nothing whatsoever. And they they went right ahead. Shows you the abuse. And we concentrate an attitude that they keep exposing our community too. We continue to be exposed to airborne contaminants. And Mashasik River is being polluted. I live within the block of the site. My ch- my children are being contaminated with the airborne dust particles. And that's been continuous. And I don't believe the twenty year tax stabilization agreement, especially one which is transferable. Should be extended to a company that does that. Three years almost, they've abused our community and and I gotta wonder why that is. Is it because it's uh, made up of a high percentage of people of color? And economically disadvantaged people is out why they were they were allowed to do that. Because I wouldn't see that happen anywhere else in the city. No other district, and I've said it before. And yet here they are. So are we supposed to jump up and down because they finally got the financing to initiate something that I consider immoral? The fact that they're coming here for modest state to take away the only green space that these children have in that district. To bury tons of heavily contaminated dirt and and debris and all sorts of things into Morley Field, pave it into a parking lot. It go- it is at odds with not only the state, but the city's. Climate resiliency mitigation. You don't turn a permeable surface into an impermeable one at this time of the year. This time in our climate, the way it is. Creates a heat island. And the monstrosity of um, development that they want to build over there, taking up an entire city block. It's not the sort of planning that I think the city envisions. It's not the sort of development that's gonna improve the community. It's not the sort of uh, development that's getting through property value, quality of life. And resiliency of the area and the city as a whole. But that's my personal opinion, which is echoed, and I I want to thank. The the few, the people who submitted initial comments regarding that. I'm not sure where that's gonna go. Uh, regarding the um, we'll see what happens on August eighth. Um, but I want to thank Greg Garrett and I want to thank um. Adam Greenman, who submitted, actually, if anybody has uh, any questions to what I've been saying, he actually. Reflects it exactly the reasons why it shouldn't be extended in light of everything. So if you want to read anything. You can read his letter dated July seventh. I thank him for submitting that letter. And I thank um. Ken Segalia. Segalia, sorry. For his extensive account of why it shouldn't be extended. And also Jeannie Silversmith, the Executive Director. Of Rural Environmental Education Association. All of it, and these are just a small sample, but for the last three years since this entire incident has uh, and it was initiated. Uh, the entire community's been against this. The only people, again, who are for this monstrosity. Environmentally reckless proposal is the administration. Who's benefiting an out of state. Company. So I I I'm gonna assume that the the priority to to keep the quality of life, the health and safety of the children of Woodlawn and the community. Isn't worth anything. That uh, priority should be given to an out of state, not even a a Pawtucket resident or state or island resident, but. New York to come here and do what they're proposing to do. And then only that. They've misrepresented their finances um, to this to this council for over two years, in terms of what was going on with the financing. And it's been just brought to my attention, something that I find particularly disturbing. Let's give it one second. But this community is not certain who actually owns one Mashasik Street right now because. They've mortgaged themselves and made things that they've assigned their proprietary interest into the property to. A quasi-state agency. And I'm just that, I find that particularly disturbing how the state is getting involved in this with the Quanta Development Corporation, apparently on May twenty, twenty twenty five. Were the beneficiary of a mortgage deed from Blackstone.
Counsel, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stop here. None of that is before us, so we we don't have that on our agenda. And we don't have the ability to speak to that, so.
A- a- and that's fine. That's why I'm I'm saving this till the um, August eighth meeting. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more public input regarding this. Three rallies, I guess, isn't sufficient.
Three what?
Three rallies that's been uh, that's been brought out regarding Molly, what's happening over there, is insufficient to change minds. And now. State quasi state is just getting involved to something local here. And I'm I'm just trying to figure out what, but again, we're gonna address all of that on August eighth. Thank you.
I'm just a little unclear. Rick. What did we do with the last meeting relative to the August eighth meeting? Did we continue any matter? I mean.
Just invited, just invited J K to come in for a pre.
Okay, all right, all right. I. I was just a little lost on the discussion of what was expected to happen on the evening. Okay, Counsel Wildenham, introduce.
Yeah. Um. Uh, I wanted to thank Counsel Milos for his opinion, uh, which we sought the last meeting. And uh, when I read through it, you know, it it it, I guess it accurately depicts what our powers are, what our powers are not. And it made me go back and read over the TSA because a lot of people have an issue with the TSA. Since since I've been here in fifteen years, I've always been a proponent of. You know, of projects happening in this city and also realizing that we do not have the money to fund these projects. So the TSA has been put out there as a way to incentivize people turning around and investing in our city. And at some point, we get people that don't follow through with their commitment for whatever reason, COVID. Uh, supply chain. We've had numerous uh, people apply and put. Projects in front of us, twenty five million, twenty million. And some of them come to fruition and some of them haven't. But, you know, I I say that only from the standpoint that. This contractor is, as Counsel Gregor points out, has taken a period of time, but he's not the only one. Uh, so I I s- I took the time to look up the uh, another tax stabilization agreement that we had for Dexter Commons. And we had to do the same thing. We had to extend it out because of COVID, because of financing. But now if we go by the place today, we can see the steel in the ground and them starting to hold their commitments. We've had other commitments from. Uh, Ms. Aurora Lee and um, some of those are already expired because it's going past the timeframe that she had it. They've been very fruitful to the city. And the Dexter Commons uh, issue, we went from eight thousand dollars in taxes to the point where. It's done, the tax treaty is done, we'll be getting six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax revenue. The same thing here in Morley Field and and Counsel Gregor, uh, when he he pointed out. That, and I appreciate him pointing it out, he has a right to his opinion and everything else. When we went through this back in the time, because I was chairman of property at the time. When this was presented to us, the tax treaty, the the reasoning for everything, it was bringing three hundred jobs to his area. An area that a lot of his constituents don't have vehicles to get back and forth to work. So we saw it as a a potential gain of three hundred jobs. That his constituents would be able to walk back and forth to. Um, that excited us. Uh, and it also excited me, but it also disappointed me that it took two to three years to actually do it. And actually, for a developer to leave the the area in the state that it was left in, that bothers me also. Uh, and being told now that they've got their financing, they're gonna start their project. They have until December thirty first, twenty twenty seven to complete their project. If they do not do so, then they jeopardize their tax treaty with the city. That's where we would have authority to actually take some type of action. Because they didn't fulfill their commitment to us. They haven't fulfilled a lot of commitments to us, but. They are proceeding. They have a date that they have to continue by and and complete by in order to do it, just like other developers. So I I I, while I hear a lot of people complaining about these tax things, these these tax treaties are going to benefit the taxpayers in the city of Pawtucket. Where the administrations, future administrations, hopefully won't be able to reach in their pocket and raise taxes to the point of six point three six percent. Uh, because we took tax bases of thirty two thousand and brought it up to six hundred and twelve thousand with their investment. Their money, not our money, their money. So there are conditions that they have to meet. There are conditions that we have to tolerate sometimes. But I am, I am, like I said, I I see this, these things as adv- advantageous to the future to keep our residents in their homes. So that's the only statement I wanted to make. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, uh, item four.
If I could just quickly respond real quick. Um, tax mark, appreciate your your comments. However, I just want to make something clear. When that proposal was initiated. Um, it was a hundred and fifty job stops that was expected, and that's when. We went under the impression that Amazon was coming. So clearly that didn't happen. So how we jumped from one fifty to four hundred, five hundred jobs, it's suggesting with zero. Evidence that would suggest that is beyond me. Uh, but so two is, yes, I think tax stabilization agreements. A great way to motivate development and get people to come here, but they should be for responsible developers who are gonna come here and do something. It's not, and I'm not so bothered with time, but when someone initiates doing what they did here, even a year prior. And then demolishing the place, heavily contaminating, leaving it like that with zero protection for the public for two years, they should not be rewarded. It sets a terrible example that people can just, developers uh, of the same type of sorts can come here and fleece. The population here, the taxpayers. That's a terrible set things uh, precedent to set up. But yeah, you're talking about the Dexter Street, that's a, that, yeah, it took time, whatever reason, but they didn't do anything in the interim to affect the public. Health, the public safety or anything like that. And that's, those are the sort of developments that I absolutely support, which I did, but not in this case. We don't even know who owns the place right now. Counsel Wildenham.
Okay, Counsel, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your passion, but the place that we're sitting in here today. Was another example of people bringing in jobs and and promising a hundred and fifty and it turned out to be three hundred. So. You know, you you can make all the comments you want and I appreciate it, but I also know that there's other other developments that have worked. And I'm just saying, I don't want to see those get turned away because we have an issue with one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Moreno.
Item uh, three is a. Res- resolution celebrating Colombian Independence Day in the city of Pawtucket. I move forward. Approval on a roll call.
The move by Counsel Moreno, second by Counsel Codier. That a resolution celebrating Colombian Independence Day in the city of Pawtucket be approved on a. that a resolution celebrating Colombian Independence Day in the city of Pawtucket be approved on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion?
Just one.
Councilor.
Comment, um, I just wanted it to, um, uh, express appreciation on behalf of Councilor E O and I, um, to everyone who had a hand in drafting the as a and and, um, and and, um, as always, um, we we are, um, we are, um, um, proud to be in a, um, in, in, in a, um, city that that and, um, and race, um, oh, 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 oh. Um, 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 sure and I, 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 I just, so, I, 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 you.
Thank you. Uh, I was gonna say the same thing about Council, Council Rubio, she couldn't be here tonight. Um, uh, but you and she were the spearheads to this. So any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yes.
Councilor Codere.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yeah.
Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Willingham.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Number four is an ordinance and amendment of chapter one oh eight, one twelve, one ninety three, two fifty one, two sixty, and three oh two of the Code of Ordinances the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, regarding various licensing fees. Call for approval on, for second passage on a roll call vote.
Second.
The move by Councilor, uh, Willingham, second by Councilor Moran, that an ordinance and amendment of chapters one oh eight, one twelve, one ninety three, two fifty one, two sixty, and three oh T, three oh two of the Code of Ordinances, City Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, regarding various license fees. The motion is for approval on a second passage on a roll call vote. Any discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yes.
Councilor Codere.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Willingham.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Number five is that ordinance and amendment of chapter two oh two of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, entitled Fees, Various Fees Changed by the zoning and, oh, excuse me, charged by the zoning and code enforcement, uh, and planning department. I call for approval on a roll call vote for second passage.
Second. Move by Councilor Willingham, second by Councilor Moran, that an ordinance and amendment of the chapters, chapter two oh two of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, entitled Fees, for various fees charged by the zoning and code enforcement and planning departments. This is, uh, motions for second passage on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yes.
Councilor Codere.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Willingham.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Item number six, the Committee of Claims and Vending Suits returns the following claims for damages against the city. The following three were approved at a three hundred dollar max. Uh, Ronald Bakala Junior for a pothole, Lorena Rivera for a pothole, and Luis Rosario for a pothole, no, a pothole. Again, that is for three hundred dollars for each one.
The move by Councilor Ruzo, second by Councilor Moreno, that three claims all involving potholes be approved at the state max of three hundred dollars. They are for Ronald Bakala Junior, Lorena Rivera, and Luis Rosario. Again, all three hundred dollar max. The motion, uh, the suggestion from the Claims Committee is motion to approve. Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yes.
Councilor Codere.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yeah.
Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Willingham. Seven to zero.
And in the claim of Gail Robinson for two hundred sixty five dollars and fifty two cents for a tire, my motion is to deny and refer to demio construction.
Move by Councilor Ruzo, second by Councilor Moreno, that a claim of Gail Robinson for the amount of two hundred and sixty five dollars and fifty two cents for a tire damage be denied and referred to demio construction. Is there any discussion on that? All in fa- I'm sorry, clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
Yes, to deny and refer.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yes.
Councilor Codere.
Yes.
Councilor Greger. Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Willingham.
Yeah.
Seven to zero.
No further business coming from Pawtucket City Council. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Move by Councilor Ruzo, second by Council, uh, Greger, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all.